I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for February 18th. Please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every liberty and justice for all.
The roll?
Vaughn.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Shower.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Gustafson.
Here.
Clistic.
Belzak.
Here.
Six present and one absent.
We have a quorum that takes us to questions and comments and announcements of a general nature. This was put in our agenda several years ago to give people an opportunity to present something to the city council so they might not have to wait till the end of the meeting. This could be on an agenda item as well as anything in general. Does anyone have anything they'd like to present to the council tonight? Please come forward and state your name.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Quentin Sims. I live at 54371st Street. I've been talking to Dan Gombach and Lester Vaughn, and about two years ago, I requested an estimate for getting some backyard drainage help, and we got that estimate. And we went through a first round of who's interested, and it's down to four from 15, but it evidently isn't put on the budget, and I would like the council to consider that. It's four houses right now that are left in the group, and we'd like to see the work done if possible.
Thank you. Just for your -- Quentin, we have our budget discussions. Alderman can bring that up. Again, it has been something taken out of the budget this year, but the line item is there, and we will be discussing that.
Okay.
So you may want to attend our meetings. I believe that'll probably come up, not tomorrow night, but it might come up next Tuesday night.
I'll be out of town.
There's a slight chance, you know, I'm not sure of the scheduling. There's a slight chance it would come up, but in any event, you know, at least the elected officials heard you tonight, and will, I'm sure, keep that in mind when they're talking about it tomorrow.
Okay. Excellent.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Brian Hensy at 53771st Street, right next to Tracy Sims. I just also wanted to echo what he said about the drainage issue, and I appreciate the quote that the city provided. And we are, my family has orders now to retire from the military here this summer, and we're moving back to Washington State. And I was hoping to actually help out this house and help the community fix the drainage system before I actually leave the area, so thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? If no more, then we will move to approval of our minutes for February 3, 2020. We have a motion to approve. Alderman Kenny, second by Alderman Shower. Any questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Kenny.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Abstain.
Belzak.
Aye.
Clistic? Oh, I'm sorry, he's absent. Gustafson?
Aye.
I have six ayes, one abstain, and one absent.
The minutes are approved. Takes us to receiving of communications. Do any of the Aldermen have communications? On Shower.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got a couple communications today, actually the past week. One of them's from Matt Reinkar at 7717 Stratford. He was questioning about the fact that there's a lot of homeless that was begging at the corner of 75th and Cass, and I kind of passed this on to the chief, and chief kind of explained it to me, but I thought it would be a good idea to explain it to the public, what's going on with that, so.
Sure. I think about two years ago, the U.S. Supreme Court decided that that's permissible, and so probably about two, three months ago, DuPage County State's attorney advised that we should no longer be enforcing any of those rules, so we stopped.
There's nothing, then that's it?
No, that's a Supreme Court decision.
Gotcha, okay. All right. The other thing that I got was a communication from Lisa Cairo at 7921 Pine Court in regards to rear yard drainage. She was on the list last year and got it completed, and absolutely loves her rear yard drainage, and she was very appreciative, and she wanted to let me know, to let you know, Dan, and everybody else at the city of Darien, that it looks terrific. It was perfect at the end of last year. She's looking forward to the spring and enjoying her backyard. She did go on to mention that there's other people that, once it was completed, was kind of interested in doing it, you know, going forward, that live in the neighborhood, so it's going to be an interesting subject, because she was the one that brought it up, that she had already found out that it's not on the budget, and would like for us to talk about it a little bit more, so.
Thanks, Alderman Belzak.
Yeah, I also received an email from the Hulsman family on Hinswood Drive in regard to the same issue, also asking that we reconsider the rear yard drainage for this fiscal year.
Alderman Vaughn.
And I also, drainage projects are a hot topic today. I also received an email from Mr. Hensy and Mr. Sims in regards to the drainage project, so I'm hoping that we can get it on the books for 2020 so that our, so they can be as happy as Alderman here, as his constituents, so.
It's like the public works facility.
Keep pushing, Dan. Keep trying.
Anyone else? All right, if there's no more communications, takes us to the mayor's report, and I just got a few brief updates for our census. We have formed our Complete Count Census Committee. The other night at the EDC meeting, the EDC, which is Economic Development Committee, is going to serve a dual role as both the Economic Development Committee as well as the Complete Count Committee for the 2020 census. Tina Belkey was named chairperson of that committee. Robert Hahn was named co-chairman of that committee. We have targeted schools, churches, and civic groups as key awareness information groups. We have packets of information that will go out to the schools, which will go out to the churches, which will go out to civic organizations, social organizations, asking them to become involved, how to get their membership involved in terms of making sure that we have an accurate count. The Indian Prairie Library and the Darien Park District have said they are willing to work with us. They're going to spread our materials. We give them a packet of information. They'll publish that in their newsletters and all their documents. We were going to have a terminal at the Park District and a terminal at the library. We decided that would be too difficult to man, so we're going to have one terminal that'll be available here upstairs by the front window that people will be able to use if you don't have a computer at home. And we'll continue to put information in our weekly e-news, the Direct Connect, as well as public service announcements. And just for everybody's information, you will get a letter in March, probably towards the end of March, saying, "Please go online by April date and complete your census online." People who don't complete that census right away will get that information at the city level, and then people will actually be going out and will be visiting those homes in general. But this year, it's going to be online. Now, some people will be getting paper copies, so they will be able to fill out a paper copy. In fact, those who don't go online by April 1st or April 2nd will get a notice from the United States government, from the Census Bureau, and they will get a paper copy if that's what they choose to get. That's one announcement. The other thing is, if you've been upstairs in our lobby, our lobby is done. Our Hinsdale South Art Honors students have completed our lobby in terms of the mural, Darien past and Darien present. We will be having a cake and coffee reception and dedication upstairs on March 16th at 6:00 in that lobby. We have invited the parents of those children. We're inviting all the Aldermen. As much as many as the public would like to attend, we will have the superintendent of District 86, as well as the principal of Hinsdale South present that night, and so we'd like you to join us to make sure that we honor these children, who basically started in September with an idea, and what they have upstairs is the fulfillment of that idea, so we ask you to join us. The other thing I would mention real quickly is that we were informed by Mr. Tim Sullivan of the Neighbors Magazine that somehow word got out that the Neighbors Magazine was no longer publishing. That is inaccurate. Neighbors Magazine is publishing, is publishing in other communities, it's publishing online. Darien is not going to be utilizing Neighbors Magazine. So we are developing a new newsletter through our association with Metro Strategies, which is our new social media company, but I wanted to inform everybody that Neighbors Magazine, the Neighbors Publishing is healthy, and they are publishing and they are working in other communities. And then the last thing I have here is consideration of a motion to approve a resolution recognizing Alita Pecknick, the 2020 Darien Citizen of the Year in the city of Darien, and I'd like to read that resolution. Whereas Alita Pecknick has been a resident of Darien since 1974, and whereas Alita and Tom have been married for 50 years, and are proud parents to Leslie and Melissa and her son-in-law Mike, and proud grandparents to granddaughters Danielle, Kelly, and Taylor, and whereas Alita Pecknick's milestones are not measured in days or months of support, but in a multitude of years, and whereas Alita Pecknick is dedicated to her parish, Our Lady of Peace, which spans more than 45 years. Since 2006, she served as bereavement minister, helping families grieving the loss of a loved one, and in planning funeral services and masses. Alita has planned more than 80 funerals, working with families through a painful and difficult time. Her grace, compassion, and love are a lasting connection with families she has assisted. Alita is a greeter at every Sunday 10:15 mass. She enjoys welcoming parishioners to the service and extending a hand of fellowship, which provides her with an uplifting feeling of well-being. For more than 10 years, she has been a member of the Divine Mercy Senical at the parish. She also serves as a eucharistic minister, lector, and other church committees as needed. And whereas Alita Pecknick serves on the No One Dies Alone team at Hinsdale and LaGrange Hospital, which provides a compassionate and caring presence for the terminally ill patients in hospice care. She also serves at Hinsdale Hospital as escort, helping patients find their way throughout the hospital, and whereas for more than 13 years, Alita has been a devoted caregiver at Revere Court Memory Care in Bolingbrook, working tirelessly to support and care for a cousin who suffers from several health and mental issues. And whereas Alita Pecknick is a member of the Darien School District 61 Citizen Advisory Committee, Darien Historical Society, and Younger Than Ever Seniors Club, and whereas Alita Pecknick is a past member of the Darien Women's Club, where she chaired the Finance, Home Life, Conservation, and Community Improvement Project. And whereas Alita Pecknick has been a member of the city's Environmental Committee since 2008, and regularly attends the Argon Roundtable Meetings, which includes updates on Argon Projects and Nuclear Waste Disposal. Alita was recently appointed to the city's Home Decorating Committee. In October 2019, she received the Distinguished City's Heart of Darien Award. And whereas from 1981 to 1989, Alita served as a teacher's aide in the physically handicapped classrooms at Concord School in Darien. In 1989, she graduated from Elmhurst College with a bachelor's degree in elementary education. In 1990, Alita was hired by Central Stickney School District Charles J. Saz Elementary School in Chicago as a teacher in the gifted program for second and fifth graders, and in 1994, she earned the endorsement in the gifted program from National Lewis University. Alita graduated from Purdue University's Teacher Facilitator Program in order for Saz eighth-grade students to participate in a simulation space mission program called Rendezvous with a Comet at Purdue's West Lafayette campus. This program still functions today for eighth-grade Saz students. While at Saz Elementary School, Alita was an initiator and facilitator for the Star Reading Program and the Solar Car Project in conjunction with Argon National Laboratory. She assisted as a curriculum developer for a summer program on landfill design and engineering, also with Argon National Laboratory. In 1995, Alita was honored with the Distinguished Recognition Award from President Clinton for her work with students in the landfill environmental program. In 1997, Saz Elementary School recognized her with the Heart of Saz Teaching Award. Alita retired in 2004 from Saz Elementary, but continues to serve there as a substitute. She has a wonderful rapport with present and past students, sharing stories, helping them make good choices in life and character, doing the right things, and being a role model to them whenever and wherever she can. Alita is indeed a role model to and within the city of Darien. Whereas Alita Pecknick is, when asked what she does for her free time, she quickly responds, "I am diligent in walking two miles a day on my treadmill." She rides her bike or walks throughout the community regularly. Alita and Tom are travelers and are always looking for the next place to visit. They are tenured subscription members of the Jury Lane Theater, love live Broadway productions, and enjoy fine dining. Whereas, as her granddaughter states, "My grandmother puts her heart and soul into everything she does." She has made a big difference in so many lives that she has in common contact with, with her positive and compassionate attitude. Whereas Alita Pecknick noted to the committee, "This honor is a legacy in her life." Indeed, she is and will always be a legacy to and in the city of Darien. Whereas Alita Pecknick certainly satisfies the guidelines for the selection of the Citizen of the Year for her diversity of activities, length of service, degree of involvement in the community, and impact to the city of Darien, and whereas Alita Pecknick is indeed a role model to and within the city of Darien. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Darien, DuPage County, Illinois, that Alita Pecknick be hereby designated the 2020 Citizen of the Year for the city of Darien in recognition of her many years of dedicated service to the city of Darien and its residents." Motion to approve. Alderman Shower, second by Alderman Kenny. End of vote.
Shower.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Mayor Marquez.
Aye.
Clerk Regona, aye. Treasurer Corin.
Aye.
Attorney Murphy.
Aye.
Administrator Vanna.
Aye.
It's unanimous, 12 ayes.
Motion passes. Alita? (applause) Let's get one with the, you hold on the plaque.
Hold the proclamation forward like that. Great. Perfect. And then her family with the job. (applause)
Alita, would you like to say a few words? Would you like to say a few? Army? Please.
I'd like to first thank the Citizen of the Year Committee, so the committee that nominated me. What a great committee, and it's chaired, the chairman is Bonnie Cosera, and they work so hard. I've never really realized how, what goes into this award, and I've been to many others that preceded me, and it takes a lot of work, and I can't thank the committee for all the time and effort that they've put in for this. I also want to thank Mayor Marquez and all of the council for approving and appointing me, too, and again, it's such a prestigious award. What I think is just so wonderful for this award is that the picture, 1972, this award started, and in the vestal bureau, you'll see since 1972, all the people that have preceded with this wonderful award, some amazing people that have gotten this award. I hope I can live up to it, to continue to live up to it. But since 1972, there are 49 pictures out there, and mine becomes the 50th, and for 2020, and it's so appropriate. I'm going to be married 50 years, and it's just a great, wonderful year, so.[1346.83][1346.83](applause) You know, when you work and volunteer, I really feel that there's, you never do it alone, and a lot of people are always behind you, helping you and guiding you, and that certainly has been the fact in my life. And my family has been very important to me. I love them dearly, and I would definitely like to introduce them, if I may. My husband, first of 50 years, he's just been my rock, and so I'd like to, Tom is my husband, and then my two beautiful daughters, Melissa and Leslie, and then I have three wonderful, my one son-in-law here, who is my other rock, he's just always there when we need something or whatever. He's just a great guy. Thank you, Mike. My beautiful Danielle is not here, my number one granddaughter. She lives in Valparaiso, and she couldn't be here tonight. But then I have Kelly. Kelly's my second granddaughter, and then Taylor, and she's the littlest one, and I love them all. So again, I want to thank everybody for coming, and this is just amazing. People, people from school, from the parish, and just my good friends, and I mean, when I walked in tonight, this was just really wonderful, to see so many good friends and colleagues, and I can't thank you enough, and people from the parish, and just wonderful friends, and thank you for always supporting me, having my back, and just your friendship means so much. So I'd just like to say, if anybody's watching on Channel 6 tonight, I hope you are, that the celebration, we're having the banquet on March 7th, Saturday, at Alpine Banquets, and I sure would love everybody to come and celebrate for that night, too. And if anything, Alpine, you get the platter of Kalachkis at then.[1495.83][1495.83](laughter) It's really wonderful. It's a wonderful dinner. So on that note, I will say more on the 7th, but again, this is a wonderful legacy to me, because my picture being out there, joining the others, when I die, when I pass, my memory will go on, and I think that's really important, and for a person, I mean, it's such an honor, so I'm so grateful to all of you. Thank you so much for being here, and I look forward to hopefully being with you on the 7th and enjoying some more time together. Thank you again.[1540.83][1540.83](applause)
Alita, we don't mean to be Indian givers, but we'll need that proclamation and that plaque back tonight, so that we can award it to you again on March 7th. You can hold on to it, you can hold on to it for...
I gave it to Bonnie, and I'm giving it to...
Yeah, give it to Bonnie. City Clerk's report?
No report this evening.
City Administrator's report?
Thank you, Mayor. One item, the Direct Connect, it will have a new look. Metro Strategies, that was one of the first tasks that they were given from us. It's always been good information, but it definitely needed revamping, and we're excited to get that out. Again, it'll roll out. We're going to start putting that out on Thursdays, and it has a whole new look, and it'll be out this Thursday, and hopefully it's better information, easier to read, easier to follow, so we look forward to that. Thank you.
It takes us to, my computer. Department head reports, police department, chief, anything?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
No report, Mr. Mayor. No report. Standing committee?
Treasurer report. Treasurer.
Oh, Treasurer, I'm sorry, we've got to pay bills.
Freudian slip.
I'm just excited about our Alita.
He wants cake.
Nobody wants to hear numbers. Everybody wants cake.
You can't blame him, Mike.
I understand. Thank you, Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 192021, the amount of $470,837.2 from listed funds, payroll for the period ended February 13th, the amount of $263,204.75 for a total to be approved of $734,041.77.
Motion to approve. Alderwoman Sullivan, second by Alderman Belzak. Any questions or comments for the treasurer? End of the roll.
I mean, Sullivan.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
The monthly report, Mike?
Monthly report, revenue and expenditures for the nine months ended January 31st. General fund, year-to-date revenue of $12,887,698, expenditures of $9,932,230, current balance of $3,769,717. Water fund, year-to-date revenue of $6,503,258, expenditures of $4,980,638, current balance Motor fuel tax fund, year-to-date revenue $596,747, expenditures $346,681, current balance $598,407. Water depreciation fund, year-to-date revenue $14,658, expenditures $369,356, current balance $2,206,862. Capital improvement fund, year-to-date revenue $279,866, expenses of $5,103,003, current balance $4,214,119.
Any questions for Mike on the monthly report? Mike, did you want to add anything about the pension program?
Yeah, lastly, I just wanted to indicate, we did have our quarterly meeting with the investment advisors from the Police Pension Fund. We have two investment advisors currently. They're looking at possibly consolidating down to one. Each one manages about $15 million, so we have about $30 million total in the Police Pension Fund. Naturally, with the markets being what they were last year, unfortunately, the numbers are on a calendar year basis, and we're on a fiscal year ended April 30th, but for the quarter, the last quarter of the year, each fund generated about 4.5% return for the calendar year to 2020. Once it's all consolidated, they'll only have discretion as far as hearing, hearings in terms of disability payments and things like that. But I was told to keep it short, so...
Thank you, Mike.
Anything anybody else wants. See me after.
Now, we go to Standing Committee reports. Alderman Belzak.
Thank you, Mayor. The next municipal services meeting will be next Monday, which is the 24th of February at 7:00 PM in council chambers.
Thank you. Alderwoman Sullivan?
As indicated earlier, it's budget time, and the Administrative Finance Committee will start their Committee of a Whole meetings, starting tomorrow evening here in council chambers at 6:30. There's a series of meetings planned, starting with tomorrow, followed by Tuesday, the 25th of February, Tuesday, the 3rd of March, and if necessary, Tuesday, the 10th of March. You can find the preliminary budget as published, or the budget, I shouldn't say preliminary, the budget as published that will be used to be discussed, starting tomorrow on the city website, under Agendas and Minutes, under Administrative and Finance. It is a public meeting, and it will be televised, starting at 6:30 tomorrow night. If there's questions, you know, time to attend the public meeting and ask or hear things or view it on TV. And then, the Citizen of the Year Committee is very happy to announce, we obviously have our wonderful, deserving Citizen of the Year, and Alita has already mentioned about the banquet. One thing I would like to add, besides encouraging our community to attend the banquet on Saturday, March 7th, is keeping in mind that there is a deadline to RSVP and make your payment, and it is no later than Friday, February 28th. And that can all be done right here at City Hall, you can write a check to the City of Darien. It is $35 per person, and it does include dinner and a three-hour open bar, along with music and dancing. Or you can come to City Hall and pay for it in person. We hope to see you there.
Thank you, Mary. Alderman Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, the police committee met, and we approved the minutes of the January 20th, 2020 meeting. Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, March 16th, 2020, across the street in the police training room. Chief, we may want to, you know, cancel that meeting that night, because I know we're trying to get here upstairs for the Alderman to be up here for the students at Hinsdale South at the same time. So, unless you have anything pressing, okay? Thank you.
That takes us to questions and comments that are agenda-related. Does anyone in the audience have anything they'd like to comment on that's on our agenda? If nothing, then it takes us to old business. There being no old business, we move to our consent agenda. Item A, consideration of a motion to approve the Darien Chamber of Commerce 20th Annual Darien Dash, a 10K, 5K, and 1-mile walk on May 17th, 2020, beginning at 8:00 AM, and authorizing the chief of police to finalize the details of this event with the Chamber of Commerce. Item B, consideration of a motion to approve the use of the right-hand half of the following streets for the Darien Dash, which will begin at the Darien Swim and Recreation Club. The 5K course starts on Ironwood Avenue at the Darien Swim Recreation Club and heads north, and there's a listing of all the streets that will, that the, that will take place on. The 1-mile will start on Ironwood at the Darien Swim Recreation Club, head north to 69th Street, turn east to 69th Street to Sierra Drive. They will then turn south on Sierra Drive to 71st Street, turn west on 71st Street to Beech Nut Lane, turn north on Beech Nut Lane to Ironwood Avenue, and turn west on Ironwood Avenue to start-finish line. Item C, consideration of a motion to grant a waiver of the raffle license bond requirement for Our Lady of Peace's Homeschool Association. Item D, consideration of a motion to accept a proposal from UniWeb to update and refresh the city's website in an amount of $3,900. Item E, consideration of a resolution authorizing the participation in the Northern Illinois Municipal Electric Collaborative, which is called NYMEC, and authorizing the city administrator to approve a contract with the lowest-cost electricity provider for a period up to 36 months. Item F, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution to rescind Resolution R1420, which took place at the February 3rd, 2020 meeting, and then authorizing the purchase, which authorized the purchase of two SolarSpeed Alert 18-speed limit signs from Traffic Logix Corporation in an amount not to exceed $5,598. Item G, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution accepting a quote from All Traffic Solutions, authorizing the purchase of two SolarSpeed Alert 18-speed limit signs from All Traffic Solutions Corporation in an amount not to exceed $7,800. And that's our consent agenda. Motion to approve. Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Belzak. End of roll.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Schauer?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
The consent agenda is approved. Does anyone have anything for us? There's no new business, so does anyone have anything for us from the council that they'd like to share? I have one item I'd like to share. Tonight, I am not wearing a sports coat, I am wearing a sample of a new shirt we had designed for us by Automated. It has the Darien logo on it. Will be purchasing these for Alderman and for city staff, and that'll be coming in the near future. So, Alderman, get your sizes to Lisa Clem, so we can get you one of these shirts, and I'll be back in my traditional suit and sports coat next meeting. Anyone else? If none, the motion to adjourn? Alderman Vaughn, second by Alderman Kenny, all in favor?
Aye.
Please adjourn.